This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our monthly caucus meeting. Today is November 9th. My name is Andrea Schott, the council president and organizer for our virtual meetings. Before we begin, we'd like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer, mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. The council member staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. Although we do not have public speaking tonight, you could sign up to speak at tomorrow's Common Council meeting by emailing Elisa Tinty by 12 o'clock, or you could submit written comments to elisatinty@kingston-ny.gov, or by dropping them off at the Dropbox located outside the side door of City Hall. We also encourage you to reach out to committee chairs or your board representative at any time. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, 845-594-6120. Please note that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number again to text is 845-594-6120. As the organizer, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance chair, Majority Leader Alderman Rennie Scott Childress. Council members Alderman Tony Davis, Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch, Alderman Doug Hoop, Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morel, Alderman Don Tolloman, and Alderman Steve Shabbitt. City staff, we have City Clerk Elisa Tinty and Corp Counsel Kevin Bryant. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times that I'm being asked all. I wish you and your family good health, and I now turn the floor to Rennie Scott Childress.
You can turn the flare over to me too, but I'm afraid it won't be very exciting. All right.
Going a little too fast on that one this time.
So we've got about 20 resolutions to go over tonight to discuss. Quite a number of these are transfers in our budget. A couple of them are some big-ticket infrastructure items, so I imagine that those will require a little bit of discussion. So without further ado, unless, does anybody have any announcements they want to make? Anything to pass along of note? All right, then we'll get started. So Resolution 158 is requesting a transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department for $8,200 for modifications of the front door of the Everett Hodge Center. Doug, you want to give us a little background here?
Well, you've said it all. It's $8,200 for selling improvements reimbursed by CDBG funds to go to contracted services to do the work. There's no financial impact this passed committee unanimously.
All right. Any discussion, comments? Anybody leaning against this? Everybody for it? All right, then. Resolution 159, requesting a transfer in the Police Department budget for $1,245,000 roughly to fund the retroactive pay portion of the 2017-19 KPBA award. Anything more than that we need to know, Doug?
It's just the partitioning of the funds. This is on behalf of the controller. Retroactive pay portion, as you said, going back to 2017 and 19. Fund balance is the majority, 972,000, and the contingency is 273,000 totaling almost $1,245,000.
Great. Any questions, concerns, issues about this? All right, good. We want to make sure we live up to our contracts and our commitments. Resolution 160, requesting a transfer in the Planning Department for $285 to cover the cost of New York Planning Federation dues.
Just a simple transfer of $285 from, you know, for some, a very small amount. No financial impact.
Again, yes, good. No financial impact. Everybody's okay with that one. Resolution 161, another transfer, this one in the Controllers Department for $2,500 to balance department accounts.
Balance accounts, no financial impact. Just to transfer funds to, just to balance out the accounts here and there, about five different accounts, all coming from regular pay, coming from regular pay into five different, five different accounts, $2,500, no financial impact. Again, from the controller.
All right. Any questions, comments on that? Okay, then we'll move on to 162. Another transfer, Parks and Rec this time, a little over $450,000 to cover the expense of various park improvements. Doug, anything on this one we need to know in particular?
Andrea.
This is the one that Lindsey Timbrook wrote to us to ask us to table it, because they, her department has made some changes on it, so she wants to go back. So, and Doug, this is, so this is the one Doug was aware of. Somebody just needs to make a motion tomorrow night to send this back to committee.
Yeah, presumably we will, we will deal with this in the upcoming finance meeting on this Thursday evening, so this will not come to the floor until the December meeting.
Well, but somebody has to send it back to committee is what Andrea's saying. So Doug, can you make the motion to send it back to committee?
I so move.
Well, we'll do it tomorrow night, I mean. We have to do it on the floor, and Michelle, you'll second it? Good, thank you.
On the floor?
Yes. We're just preparing for tomorrow night on that.
Okay, fine.
Good. Our next one here, yes Andrea?
I'm sorry, I, you were going so fast and I had a cat jumping all over the place. I got distracted with Resolution 161. I have a question for Kevin. I think Elisa had mentioned that we might need to make an amendment on the floor for this one. Is that accurate? Because there's, the resolution doesn't have, or the committee report doesn't have the number. Is that true, Kevin?
Kevin looks.
Am I frozen or?
You're spotty, Kevin's frozen.
Oh, I, I am going to text him to see what's going on, but I, we may have to come back to 161 just because we might have to make it. Oh, there he is. Kevin, you're muted.
I apologize. I'm actually having some technical difficulty tonight. I'm actually using my telephone because I'm having problems with my computer here. But yes, I took a look and I don't see it anywhere in the backup. Charlie, please, Charlie, can you turn it down a little, please? Thank you. Yeah, I don't see it, the, I see the amount in the actual caption, but I don't see anything in the backup showing the amount that's being requested. That is the amount that you guys were aware of, correct?
$2,500.
About 161?
Yes.
161, yes.
In the communication.
It's delineated $2,500 from regular pay into five separate accounts, optical insurance, office supplies, postage, temporary status change, service contracts. I have, the detail is attached to the, to the committee report.
Yes, that's correct, though, but it doesn't say it on the committee report.
But what about the communication?
Communication does state the total.
All right, so that's for my, that's fine, as long as the, excuse me?
No, I just think, I just wanted to, Elisa and I just wanted to make sure that.
As long, as long as we know the origin of the number, and you have the backup, the communication reflects the amount, also on the resolution is consistent with the backup, then that's fine.
All right, great, thank you. Sorry, Rennie, for going backwards there on you.
No problem. Better fixed than broken. Something like that. All right.
By the way, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Obviously, tomorrow night, you know, during someone's comment, if they want to make mention, just so it's clearly recorded as well, but it's, it's recorded in the documentation. If someone else wants to make mention of that during a comment tomorrow, that's fine too.
Can we have somebody volunteer to do that? Jeffrey? Oh, Michelle will do it. Okay, thank you. Great, thanks. All right, then if we're done with 162, we'll move to 163. This is about adopting the Kingston Open Space Plan, which seems familiar somehow. Jeffrey?
Yes, as we may, as you guys may remember, this already went through the council, but at the time we had failed to hold a public hearing. So we did that last month, so we can move, move ahead. We're going for it now.
Good, so any questions? Any issues relating to this one? All right, then. We're good? Okay. 164, authorizing the adoption of the new schedule for retention and disposition, the schedule rather, for New York local government records. This is administrative in the Controllers Department. Anything we need to know about that, Jeffrey?
No, it's, you basically said it. It came from the clerk, Elisa. It's just for us to comply with the state requirement.
Okay, good. So everybody's good with that one? Then we'll move to 165, unless, are there any cats in play?
Sorry, Amelia must have gotten into the catnip before tonight's meeting.
All right. 165, this is relating to traffic on the streets of Kingston, public safety here. Oh, this is, oh, this is the one along Wall Street. I hope everybody saw the map there and it's clear where we're talking about. So, let's see. So anything, Tony, you want to tell us about this one? Anything we need to know beyond what's there?
No, I mean, Doug did provide, and thanks to Dan Quiznell, I know at our public safety there were some questions and request was to get some type of map up, and appreciate that Doug and Dan, and I think it's self-explanatory when you see the map of what exactly, you know, that's being requested and what DPW and city engineer are in agreement with, and so I don't see why we should not pass this through.
Okay, great. Any questions, concerns there? We're all good with it? Don Tolloman?
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm a little behind on this. Tony, can you just, I'm looking for the backup. What are they doing on Wall Street?
And Doug, you could probably answer that better, since it came from you.
I, I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
He's saying what is going on with Wall Street? Again, it's a lot of changes, several, not a lot of changes, but some changes to on-street parking and there next to the old St. Joseph's School, and, and parking meters are going to be added, and it's going to be removal of stop signs, I believe, and no parking, and then relocating that.
Is that just by St. Joseph's?
I'm sorry, I did not hear your question, Don.
The question is, is that only by St. Joseph's?
Yeah, St. Joseph's, the former school, is being turned into a religious education center. It's undergoing a lot of modifications, particularly as it relates to traffic, as the entrance and egress from the parking lot, there's some changes, which necessitate, in my view, and in the view of the parking people from the city, some changes to the configuration of parking signs and stop signs. Dan Quiznell from the city has provided a map which gives the detail after this, it passed in public safety, put four to one, but there were questions. It was kind of a provisional pass. We'll pass it, but we want to see more specifically what's happening. Dan Quiznell, who works for John Tuohy for traffic, gave me a map. I forward it to everyone. I think it's, I don't know how much more detail we can provide at this point.
Oh, that's, thank you. I think that answers. Thanks.
Michelle Hirsch?
Hi, I'm just looking at the committee report. I thought I voted yes. I know we, I made the motion for it, but I just don't see it on the committee report that I am down as a yes.
Well, my notes say it passed committee four to one, but there was a definite desire to have a specific map, which I endeavored to get and forwarded to everyone on the committee, and I'm not hearing any expression of any problems. I assume there are none, but maybe not.
Excuse me.
Michelle, I'll check that with it will be tomorrow.
And that could be, that could be on me. I may not have put it.
I was the no vote.
Committee report sent by Andrea. I'll check that in the morning.
I'm pretty sure that I was the no vote on that one.
Yes, you were.
I'm satisfied now with the map.
I think it was my mistake. Let me check what I have in the morning.
All right. Let me know if I need.
All right. Great, anything else on that one? Okay, good. Then Resolution 167, this is about removing a handicap parking space on South Manor Avenue.
We just need to make sure, we just need to make sure that it states, and I'm not sure, make sure it states 60 South Manor Avenue.
That's what I see on the committee report.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
It's a little hazy.
Yeah, it does.
Rennie?
Yes, Jeffrey?
You skipped 166, just.
I did?
Yeah. That's Wilbur and Dunn Avenue.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Yes. Resolution 166 is adding a stop sign at the intersection of Wilbur Avenue and Dunn Street. That's again Tony's committee. Tony, anything we need to know in particular about this?
No, again, it appears that was this miscommunication when we originally approved this, this resolution last month, and so the parking, or stop sign was removed at this intersection, and speaking to the city engineer and John Showtice, he's in agreement that the stop sign should go back up at, at this intersection of Wilbur and Dunn. Now, I know Mitch and Alderwoman, and Hirsch has received some communication on this from some of the people. I'm not sure if we're going to be going back, making any changes, or are we just going to stand, just add this stop sign and let it be?
Yes, I sent in further communications about other, the other stop signs that were added, so I think, hopefully those communications will be added for the next public safety meeting, or possibly have the engineer meet with the people down there. I don't know, we'll see.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, but as far as this goes, we're, we're all good with that for tomorrow night. Okay, great. Good. We did 167, then we're at 168. This is the new sales tax agreement with the county of Ulster. Doug, you want to give us some background here?
Well, this is an agreement which is pretty much parallels the previous agreement that the mayor and Controller Tuohy have negotiated with the county. 11.5% of monies from the tax, sales tax will be allocated to the city. Maximize city, you know, $14,784,553. You know, it's, it's pretty much continuation of what we've negotiated in the past. It's worked well for us. I don't know that we're going to do any better. I think we should, we should go with it.
Don Tolloman?
Hey Doug, is that better than the last agreement? You know, the last agreement had considerable criticism, that it was unfavorable to the city versus the county.
Kevin, Kevin Bryant wants to say something in response to that question?
Just to help dug out for clarification purposes, this agreement is more akin to the agreement prior to the last. The last agreement had certain limits that were imposed based on the amount that was received. In the past, there has always been a straight 11 and a half percent. It was the last contract that there was a number of criticisms, because there were certain reductions, certain caps, and so there were certain restrictions with respect to the amounts of money that could come to the city. In this instance, it's almost identical to the contract that we had prior to the last one, with the exception of the one year that states, depending on the amount, if a certain amount is received, then there would be discussions between the legislature about what would happen moving forward. So that, if you, if that particular amount is reached, then it would trigger a conversation moving forward. So it's, yes, Doug, I'm sorry, Don, to your question, it is better than the last contract. There's no question about it. It, what Doug was referring to was the contract that was for the last one, so it's very similar to that previous contract.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Yeah, and another problem with the last one was that there were a number of, I guess for lack of a better word, writers on it that brought in things that weren't really directly related to that, so this is much cleaner too. All right, then, so if everybody's good with that one, we'll move on to 169. Authorizing adding the library district charges to the 2021 property tax bills. Any questions about that, comments? Whoopsie daisy. Doug, if you're saying anything about.
Unanimously in a finance committee, 5-0, I don't have anything more to add than what you've said, Rennie.
All right. So everybody good with that one? We'll help our library along. 170, this is the authorizing the city engineer to design and construct the Broadway sewer project from near 726 Broadway to Henry Street, authorizing the mayor to execute unnecessary contracts, et cetera. What do folks think about this one?
Yeah, there are actually three of these together, 170, 171, 172, because it requires bonding of a million nine, but it's, it's, you know, it is for the replacement sewer design, building and construction for the Broadway streetscape. Design 80,000, construction a million seven, and inspection 120,000, total project cost a million nine, which we're asking the, the city engineer is requesting a million nine. This, this passed in committee by four to one. Michelle, you were the dissenting vote on this. Maybe you have more questions, I don't know.
Yeah, I got my questions cleared up. I met with the city engineer, you know. I, my, my concern was that we were learning about this so late, when this project's been underway for such a long time, but I really, and I put it out to my constituents as well, you know, explained my no vote and why. But, you know, I do believe we need to do, move ahead with getting this sewer work done. We don't want to pave and then have to rip the street up again, but I think we just need to be really, really cognizant of these issues early on in the planning process. But again, I know this has been something that's been going on for years, but I will be a yes vote.
Great, thanks. Steve Shabbitt?
Yeah, thanks, Rennie. Yeah, I mean, I was, I was for this at committee. I, I spoke further to John about it, and, you know, I'm really convinced this is the way to go. You know, he, although he, he's not giving a timeline on when he thinks this sewer will go, you know, but he's quite confident, there's 100% chance that it will go at some time. You know, I guess my worst fear is we're going to complete all the work that's done up there, and then this is going to go, we're going to have to rip everything up, you know, not to mention that the time involved, even if it's a year, you know, prices may skyrocket in a year, we never know. So, you know, I'm satisfied with John's explanation and his, his feeling that we really need this, so yeah, I'm certainly going to vote yes on this.
Very good. Any other comments? Anybody leaning toward a no vote on this?
Associated with this are the bonding resolution, which I know Tony and Michelle had some questions on this. At least in the committee, they voted against the bonding. I don't know how you feel now, but.
Well, I just said I'm for the project, so obviously I'd have to be for the bonding as well.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Tony?
Again, my concern was, again, was more on the lines was of why we were just hearing about it, as well as Alderwoman Hirsch had mentioned, and so I'm satisfied with the answers that can provide it, and we have to go through with this. Again, we can't, you know, do the road all over, then find out later on that we need to tear it back up to fix the sewer, so, and even though I was hesitant about it, I see the need that we have to do it, we have to do it this way.
Yeah, and I think too, we've, we've gotten some relatively good economic news for the city, and I think that can assuage some of our concerns about borrowing this money. So, all right, good, so that's that project. The next one, which is also related to bonding, has to do with approving the Broadway and Grand Intersection Improvements Project. So what about this one? Doug, can you give us any background?
Yeah, this is approving the Grand, Broadway Grand Street Improvement Project and appropriating funds for the project and authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary agreements to make it happen. It's a financial impact of $425,000. There's a, you know, this involves, you know, first of all, a grant of seven, the math on this is $750,000. Came from the Department of Transportation, thank you, Assemblyman Cahill, and of that $75,000 goes for redesign, leaving $675,000 of the grant. However, the construction and inspection will require a million one, so that leaves a gap of $425,000, which requesting bond authorization for that. So we have a grant of $750,000 for this project. You know, the construction's going to cost a million one, so we come up short, but hey, we've got $750,000 grant, so we have to come up with $425,000 for this, and that was requesting bond authorization for that, and, yeah, I know it's a controversial project. I think there's a lot of support for it, there, traffic-wise, maybe you're putting a park in there, a lot of good reasons for it. Not everyone is for it, there's some things against it, but pushing it is a $750,000 grant, and they don't come so easily.
Comments?
So I was also a no on this in finance. One of my. One of my biggest concerns was the sewer going from Henry to Grand to make sure we didn't have the same situation. And in meeting with city engineer John Schulteis, he you know, we went over that and he felt confident and that the sewer was okay and the reasons why the sewer was okay. This is another thing that I put out to my constituents for feedback. And I did so far get three yeses and two no's. And the three yeses were more about safety and, you know, realigning the intersection for safety. I'd like to say that this is another situation where I feel like we need to know the full number upfront when presenting projects to the public. I think there's the public really believed that this was just going to be covered by the $750 million given to us by the state. And in the future, we just need to do a better job of communicating these projects and plans.
I think you meant to say 750,000.
750,000, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. So people just had heart attacks.
Tony, you had concerns on this also.
Well, yeah, my concern is like, you know, again, piggyback on all the women Hirsch's remarks. I was just little and like I said, I like we had these figures and constituents in this city people, the city of Kingston know upfront with this cost where again, going into this, I didn't I didn't think it was going to be as much to take over a building and plan it with the former Planet Wings to have a line and now, you know, it just got more costly and costly as as time went on and you find you know, asbestos inside there. So that costs more than down there. So thank, yes, thank Assemblyman Kevin Cahill for and coming through with and that that those funds that's going to help offset some of the costs of this. And but again, I would just reiterate that in the future, when we have these kinds of projects that we can try to have the figures all upfront. And so it's not all this much and then a month or two months later, oh, well, this is costing, we need this additional funds. We need this additional funds. And so and that was what my concern was.
They're valid concerns and noted.
Jeffrey?
Jeffrey? Yeah, my concern is the same. I will likely be a no vote on this. We spent 450 to purchase the property, now 425 more than $50,000 from CDBG. It seems like it's it wasn't planned ahead properly, or maybe there were some unforeseen issues that should have been foreseen. But it's if I had known in the beginning that it would that it was going to cost this much, I would have voted no from the beginning.
Okay.
Anyone else?
So can you tell us what the does anybody know the cost of the total project? Jeffrey, do you know the the total right now they're asking?
Well, Doug is the one to ask about the total cost.
Patrick, I did not hear your question.
I think he's asking what's the total cost?
I was just wondering if you like added it all up so at the end, what's it going to cost us for the city?
About about $900,000.
Well, it's costing $1,085,000 for the engineering services and for project construction and inspection, of which $750,000 is a grant. So it's 1.875 million dollars.
But that's not what the city's paying because we've got the grant, right?
That's correct.
Right. So what's
The grant is $750,000. So we are paying essentially half a million dollars. We're paying for the engineering services and the bond authorization. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're paying $425,000.
Right. And then we paid 400 something for the building. So we're up around $850,000 total to alter this intersection. Michelle, Andrea, then Jeffrey?
I'm just also referring back to an email the council received from Kristen Wilson saying that some $230,000 or $265,000 is being put towards the intersection. Those funds were diverted from the original Broadway streetscape project. So I think that then gets subtracted back out as well.
That would bring us down into around 700,000 total. Andrea Shaw and then Jeffrey?
Yeah, and then you have to add the 50,000 that's using out of the CDBG funds for demolition and asbestos removal and demolition. And then none of we haven't all we haven't talked about the that will parlet that the community development did not pass out of committee. But eventually that will that those funds were 100,000.
Right.
So that's going to likely a future. Yeah. We all want to think.
What was that, Andrea? I didn't hear that.
I'm just saying, because, you know, it's something saying that we want to think of all the few it's just going to be an open green space, if it's going to be a little parlet. But the community development did hear that mayor's plan was for a parlet. So that's I think what we have to work for.
All right. Jeffrey?
No, that's what I was going to bring up, bring up that that it was this cost that community developed. There was additional cost for the building of the park. So that will likely be money that we'd have to spend in the future.
Yeah, I realize that it's a lot of money, but I believe that the overarching issue here has to do, number one, with safety. I've heard from several people in my ward who are very concerned about that intersection, the way it is, particularly people who ride bikes and walk. One of my constituents was very concerned, too, about trying to figure out a different way perhaps to configure the intersection. But after talking with the engineer, Kristen Wilson, and other interested parties, he, for example, is perfectly satisfied that this is the best solution. The one, the plan that's before us now. And I think, yeah, there might be there's going to be a public process for deciding then what to do with the two empty parts, the nature of the park. But I think that that has a great potential because it's going to add green space, some open space, a place where there will be a kind of eye respite in midtown that we don't have at the moment. So I think it's a good thing to look forward to improving that particular intersection in quite a number of ways. Steve Shabbat?
Yes. Yeah. I agree with Reni. I think in our discussions, we talk about the intersection part and the safety, which I feel is a huge part. I mean, I really I hate that intersection. I've had many close calls, as I've said. But I don't think we can overlook the aesthetic value. But if it was just aesthetics, I wouldn't be going along with it. But I think, you know, we're doing a lot for that Broadway corridor. We've been we've been talking about doing making that, you know, more beautiful, you know, for a lot longer than I've been on the council. This has been a topic of conversation. You know, we're doing some good things with the streetscape. You know, I really think this is going to add to the to the aesthetic quality that we're that we're hoping to achieve. But again, if it if this was only about aesthetics, then then I'd say no. But since it is coupled with something I I think is a real safety hazard, you know, I'm going to be voting yes on it.
From a biker standpoint, of which I am one, I was through there on Friday afternoon. First of all, there are a lot more people out there on bikes and I went through that intersection. And, you know, I'm very careful. It's quite harrowing. I can imagine someone going through there with two or three children on these little bikes. It's not fun. It's not safe.
Yes. All right, good. So I think we're clear on that one. Then let's move on to 176. The other couple of measures there were related to the bond. So I'll assume that we're our votes are clear on that. So 176 is about moving the section relating to animals in our city code from zoning into the City of Kingston Planning Board, Ulster County Planning Board, Historic Landmark Preservation Commission, getting their input. Is that right, Jeffrey?
Yes, that is correct. There were some mistakes with the with what we received earlier today. So there is no action being taken on the following three, 176, 177, and 178. The only thing we we approved through laws and rules was to refer these matters to the Ulster County Planning Board, the City of Kingston Planning Board, and the HLPC for comment before we we move on them. So they are all they'll all be on laws and rules as all the old business once we receive the comments from those three agencies.
Okay, good. I presume everybody's okay with that. Yes. 177 then is about regarding formula retail stores. So I didn't quite realize we had
Yeah, Reni, I prefer this to Kevin. Dan told me that this is just for referring out to this is not to be voted on by us, just referred out to planning. Kevin, do you know about this? Dan was surprising me earlier.
Do my can I jump in this one?
Go ahead. Andrea?
I don't know what your what legislation list you're looking at, but when it first came out, there were a couple of mistakes on the these three or four. So this is just what passed out of committee was just to be referred for comments.
Correct.
Not for action to happen. It would then go back to laws and rules. And then the committee would either endorse it or not. So this is just for this is just for comments. Does that answer your question? Because I know I
I believe that's correct. Yeah.
And so we I I worked through Janet with either Dan or Kevin on making sure that these are correct.
That is correct.
179.
Janet sent these out late today. So the revised ones, the revised versions of all of these are available on our email, our city email, if you want to take a look there. So 178 then, I believe, is something similar as well.
Yes.
This is about the allow for temporary use variance. This is just sending this change out to refer it to the same groups, Planning Board, City Planning Board, Ulster County Planning Board, and HLPC. Yes, right, Jeffrey?
Correct.
Okay.
And then should I jump in on the last one?
Yes, 179. I'm trying to find it here.
Yeah, so that was to dispose of a portion of North Street, law and rules, now a public hearing about this. And I believe the next step is for it to go to finance for a vote.
Yes, Kevin is saying yes. Good. Thank you, Kevin, for affirming.
Can I ask what happened at the hearing? I was not there. What?
There was only one comment in favor from somebody.
Okay.
Hudson.
Yeah, somebody somebody from Sina Hudson, right? So no residents of Kingston actually testified at the hearing. All right. So if everybody's okay with that, I make it that we're at the end of the resolutions. It'll be on the docket tomorrow night. Yes? Any closing thoughts, comments, queries, questions, enthusiasms? Are we taking any bets on how our CDBG funds might change under a new administration? All right.
Hopefully, hopefully positive.
Hopefully positive, yes.
Congratulations, President-elect Biden.
Congratulations to President-elect Biden. Yes, thank you, Tony. Good sentiments. As well to Vice President-elect Kamala Harris.
Correct.
Major change in American public life. So, great, then. Without objection, I'll consider this meeting adjourned and we'll look to see everybody tomorrow night, 7:30, in this same virtual space.
All right.
Good night, all. Thanks for coming.